You were sutter dot live, watch the stories unfold. Tune in on Tuesday, the news comes alive. You are water agency, making sure we thrive. You're the city council, with Mary still in view. You're the sutter dot live, it's the truth that comes through. You're in on Tuesday, the news comes alive. You are water agency, making sure we thrive. You're the city council, with Mary still in view. You're the sutter dot live, it's the truth that comes through.
UBSutterlives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now.
UBSutterlives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now.
Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but...
I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but...
I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but... I was passing through and saw a guy catching a fish and thought I'd give it a shot.
This is the first time here. I just went up to Collins Lake. And went out there twice now. Didn't catch anything but...
We were supposed to keep on these sales.
Thank you.
I don't know, do you think so?
Not at this point.
Seems that way to me.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You ready? We'll return to open session with nothing to report from the closed. Um, we're back to the consent agenda, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that brings us, I think, to managers' report.
Well, things have been pretty mellow on the weather front, the first part of the water year. Uh, had a little bit of precipitation last week that got the ground a little bit wet, but first significant storm is, uh, upon us, should be starting today through, uh, the weekend and maybe even beyond. Some of the models show significant precipitation in the watershed, something like thirteen inches over a ten day period, which is amazing. Uh, I don't know that that'll come true, but it seems like we are going to get, um, some real precipitation here. It's fairly warm, it'll start out cold and then get warm. Um, this is a textbook atmospheric river, um, which obviously we've been studying for several years with, um, Dr. Marty Ralph and others at Scripps. Um, it's great to see, it's great to see that we're going to be refueling for the year and, uh, we'll have water supply and water for either generation. Hopefully it keeps up and hopefully it doesn't get too extreme. Um, this is the type of storm you'd be a little nervous about if you got, um, like January or February when you had a significant snowpack, but right now with, um, you know, very minor snowpack, it's not of concern. We have, uh, plenty of storage space in the reservoir to take this precipitation on, so, uh, this is a welcome storm, letting you know, um, the weather is now active. Uh, with, uh, with that, uh, New Bullards Bar is currently at five hundred eighty-one thousand acre feet. Um, that will change over the next ten days, obviously. Um, up at the power system, uh, headquarters, the new building, basically interior type finish work continues. This will be ongoing for several months, uh, but things are progressing really well. Um, there's no units under outage right now, they're prepping for the, um, coal gate unit two outage, which will happen in December. Um, they're also trying to do some, uh, work on the Narrows to small bypass hood that was damaged, um, during operations in, um, October. We, uh, let me talk about the Marysville Hotel for a minute. Um, it's, it's written up in your, um, in your report here, but I'm going to provide a little detail. For several months, we've been, I've been talking with, um, a city manager at City of Marysville for any type of opportunity that we may be able to assist, um, City of Marysville in mitigating the hotel that burned in, I think, June or July. Um, there were some pretty heavy discussions the first several weeks after the fire, um, with the county, Yuba Water Agency and the City of Marysville. I think I've reported to this board that they, they were, they were not perfectly defined, but, um, hey, could the Yuba Water Agency help? The council, um, I think decided at some point to pursue other forms of funding and, uh, potential agreement with the current landowners. So for a couple of months, I didn't hear much, or if anything, from the City of Marysville. A few weeks ago, there was an option to, um, remove the fifth floor and just the fifth floor from the hotel. So, a- and the engineering report says that if they remove the fifth floor, the structure is then safe and the highway can be opened. So then I was having, I found myself in discussions with the county and with the city on some type of financing, um, alone to help with just the removal of the floor. on some type of financing alone to help with just the removal of the floor. The county took that option as a grant to their board on last Tuesday and approved $250,000. I was in discussions with city manager about doing something similar, but not a grant, a low-interest loan, and then, well, and then we were in the newspaper related to that, that almost like the headlines looked like it was a foregone conclusion, but it did state in the newspaper that no action has been taken at the Yuba Water Agency Board. So the newspaper was accurate, although slightly misleading. Then the next day that we heard about the settlement, and so the settlement is, and I don't have all the details, but there's, there's some type of payment of $700,000 to the city from the property owner and the City of Marysville gets the property. This is me, the general manager of the water agency, summarizing what I've seen in the newspaper and seen in press releases and talked to the city manager about. At this point in time, there's no plan for Yuba Water Agency to assist, however, if they contact me and want some type of financial assistance because their scope changes or they'd like to do something, of course, I will bring that to this board. I will let you know that I was a little bit taken by surprise when the newspaper came out so aggressively that we were going to assist financially, when none of the discussion with you, well, all of the discussion was just that, it was just discussion. I've not yet received a written request for financial assistance through like our normal grant or loan process. So just wanted to give you guys the backstory on what all has transpired with the Marysville Hotel. I have a great relationship with the city manager, I think that if and when he needs something, he'll contact me and I'll keep you all posted. I'm going to skip that part of my manager's report, it's about three sentences in there, but I will move on to rest here. The Regional Water Authority released a great blog about how we and PCWA are investing in watershed resilience and forest health. Upcoming sponsorships for Yuba Water Agency include Anna McKinnney Turkey Trot on Friday, then on Saturday, the Hands of Hope Annual Run Walk and Folk in the Fall Music Festival, So You Can's Toy Drive and Vendor Fair on December 6th, as well as the District 10 Wild Duck Egg Salage Domino's Tournament, and of course, the Marysville Christmas Parade on December 7th. We will have a group of employees walking in the parade, if any of you want to join us. We're also sponsoring the Wheatland Highs Boys Basketball Team. Our regular meeting on December 3rd is going to be canceled due to many of us participating in the Aqua Conference. Our next regular board meeting will be December 17th. We do have an ABP meeting kind of out of cycle on December 11th, that's it.
Thank you, Willanna. Appreciate the information on the hotel. That has been, you know, a little bit difficult as a board member to process. I've been approached by a couple of people on what our involvement was exactly, so I appreciate the update there. These guys on the Board of Supervisors were probably more informed, but.
No.
No?
Last moment, we got the notification of the change of hands on the hotel and the $700,000 with no explanation of how it's done, so they're, they're keeping their mystique about them.
You at one time said, community aggregate, being with the city and county in Wheatland, was kind of on hold a little bit because of the hotel, wondering if your timeframe is any clearer at this point.
I would say that this settlement with the city and the property owner will allow for the city to come up with a plan, whether they're going to mitigate just the top floor or the entire building. I would say give them till the first of the year and then I'll probably be able to have meetings with the city on various subjects, including community choice aggregation. So I'm thinking around the first of the year, and it's just a matter of them getting settled. I mean, they've been spending a lot of time on this hotel issue.
Because as I remember, you said the community aggregate, once you started or formed something, then there's a year hold before anything can happen. So getting the one year started is a concern.
Yeah, and there is, there's virtually no likelihood that one year would start in calendar year 2020. So, and on a community choice, in the implementation of a community choice aggregation, the deadline is December 31st of any given year. So if anything happened with a CCA in Yuba County, it would not happen until calendar year 2025.
To the Chair. Could we use that 11th, December 11th as a possible scheduled special meeting? Because I would think that we have any number of board members available.
That's possible, we'll look into it.
So really back to the hotel, more importantly than the 700,000 is ownership of the property. Because I think there was a really short deadline on that, where they could apply for a grant that would be enough money to completely take down the hotel, but they had to own the property. So I think that's the more important issue.
And that makes sense, that's the motivation for gaining ownership.
Okay, I think we're ready for directors' reports. Director Matthews, would you like to?
I'd like to give the report.
Okay, and Director Fierer?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Director Matthews on his reelection, so, very nice. Upcoming events, the Water Festival, I was going to play a theremin, I attempted to learn it yesterday, I've now determined I will not be playing a theremin at the Water Festival, maybe I'll break out the bongo drums and learn those in series theremin. The week after, there is a Christmas tree lighting ceremony in Allahurst, you guys are all invited, there's Coco. And the day after that, I believe that Tri-County Youth Center is doing a financial seminar for children, where they get to walk around at various desks and kiosks and practice, would it be like to spend money if they were older and had money?
Don?
Well, we do have the parade, we have a tree lighting the night before, and I'm sort of on my farewell tour, so I don't want to forget to thank the agency for the opportunity of being here for four years. I'll probably say more, something more eloquent later on.
Thank you, Director Vazquez.
One of the offshoots of Cal Lavco is a link to failing or risk, at-risk water districts, and in Yuba County, we have seven, which I give a list and supporting information to Terry Daley with Prairie Downs, Lost, Lake Francis Mutual, River Highlands, Country Village, Whispering Plains, Mobile Home, Feather River Manor, and Linda County Water District. And it'll be interesting if we could get a reaction from these different water districts, what we can do to help them, or what do they need, why are they failing? Okay.
Okay, and I have nothing to report, so with that, we will adjourn.
Thank you.
Yubasutterlives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
In Marysville, where roots run deep, McNally Appliances promises to keep. The best brands with a smile on its face. We service what we sell, it's a warm embrace. Competitive pricing you can't ignore. With every purchase, you'll love it more. From fridges to washers, all in one line. We install with care to make it shine. Major brands, trusted and true. McNally Appliances is here for you. Oh, McNally McNally, we're your first choice. In Marysville, we help you rejoice. We service what we sell, no need to stress. At McNally Appliances, we're simply the best. Our promise stands, we'll always be here. McNally Appliances, bringing your cheer.
McNally Appliances, 119 D Street, Marysville. McNallyAppliances.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Thinking good vibes one day at a time. At Edible Memories, life is sublime. In every bite, you'll find a dream. Join us now, let your heart beat. Step inside, sharing the fun. Edible Memories Bakery, where happiness runs.
Edible Memories Bakery, 321 Third Street, Marysville. EdibleMemoriesBakery.com.
Hi, I'm Seth Fier with Nickel Tax and Financial Planning, and I'm your financial ally. With years of expertise, we at Nickel Tax go the extra mile to maximize your refund and get the largest allowed by law. With Seth Fier and family at Nickel Tax, it's not just about the numbers, it's about personalized service that fits your unique financial goals. That's why we fight for our clients here at Nickel Tax and Financial Planning, where Seth Fier and family are going to save you more than just nickels.
N-I-C-K-E-L-L-Tax.com.